The first holiday sign comes down and then the next advertisement goes up. So it's either okay to be there, or it's not okay to be there. There should be no regulation on temporary when it comes to a business being able to do what it needs to do to advertise its services or its products. I don't support putting signs in the right of way, but I can tell you, get ready, commissioners, because the first ones that are going to be in here are going to be the realtors. And we're going to make an exception for open house signs, for the weekend open house signs. The next one that's going to come in is Little League, and flag football, and all the junior sports that have their parades, have their grand openings, and all that, because those signs have all gone in the right of way. It's going to become a revolving door, again, for folks coming in here complaining about it, and then one of us is going to say, well, let's let the Little League go ahead and do the sign. And we're going to be right back where we're at. So this whole sign thing has been going on, and will continue to go on.
A long time.
It has to be kind of a living document, I guess. And, Chris?
We wrote it in 2010, then we rewrote an entirely new one in 2011, then we rewrote an entirely new one in 2012, then we amended that one in 2013, and then again in 2014, and then we wrote a whole new one in 2015. Like I said, in November, we're really good with the one that's in there now. I mean, it wouldn't take much to amend it to get it to where you want to be also, but the one in 2012 is actually a really good sign code. It just doesn't allow for pole signs and doesn't have a lot of flexibility like this version does.
Okay. But like I said, my biggest thing is it's either okay or it's not okay. I don't agree with the temporary.
I didn't change the motion. I was just making my comments that I listed.
I didn't say anything through the whole thing, but I agree with you.
You wanted one page, and I would agree with you. I'd like to see one page professionally made, professionally approved.
You have temporary signs, and you have signs that are approved by the building code. And to me, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Hertzberg?
Just a comment on Vice Mayor, on the temporary signs. Is that what you mean, like either they're acceptable or they're not? Are you talking about temporary signs?
When we talk about it, so what's the reason, I guess, I struggle with is if a business feels the need to put up a sign, and we limit them to a certain number of days?
Because there are certain businesses, and a restaurant might have a Valentine's Day special, and they might want to put a banner out on their property showing that, you know, we're going to have this, or we have a holiday promotion, we have something like that.
Oh.
But I'm saying, and I've seen that done in other cities where they have a permit, it's a two-week thing before their event, and you're advertising that, but that's not something, and that's one business in a plaza. My concern is not so much with a freestanding business. My concern is when you start looking at the numerous plazas that we have, and if you don't have any rules and regulations, what is to prevent every business in there from producing a sign and putting it out there along the roadway? And then the city has to determine what is for safety and what is not, and how is it fair or not fair for one business to do that and put their signs in front of the other business and do that, where there are more businesses than one in a plaza? A freestanding business, I don't see that much like the car wash and, you know, when he's got his wacky Wednesdays, or whatever they have up there, those kind of things. So I understand that you want to have a limited, you want to bring that back up again, because understand too, that a temporary sign promoting something, if it's up there all the time, it becomes part of the landscape and people don't see it. You know, it just is, when you change up your sign, you're drawing more attention to something that you're advertising.
And I think business owners are smart enough to figure that on their own. I don't think we should have to regulate that. The guy that's going to put up a Valentine's special is not going to have it still up at Halloween.
No, but then he's going to put up another one and another one and take that area that maybe somebody else in the plaza would like to have up there. My only thing is, it should be user-friendly, it should be enforceable, and it should enhance the city and it should enhance the business, and not have what we have now, so many terrible-looking signs.
All right, I'm going to close the conversation down. We've got a motion on the floor, and we're going back and forth. They just, the one that you should all look at if you don't have it in front of you, page 14, under 102-9, item number four and five, that's the one that's going to bite us. Banners, decorative flags, bunting for a celebration, convention, or commemoration of significance to the entire community. So let's just use our Relay for Life. In the eyes of many, many people, most of us up here too, that's significant to the entire community, our third annual, it's commemoration, third annual, whatever. There's going to be no, they're exempt. You go to the next one, and it says banners, and Commissioner Suker brought this up already, maintained by public and private recreational facilities, parks, gymnasiums, ball fields, that are safely secured. There's always going to be interpretation involved in that. That's what staff has to rely on. But having, as Vice Mayor said, the more we have in here, the more it becomes hard. Any businessman, I think, I don't know if Larry would agree with you or not, and I guess I shouldn't ask him from the dais, but any business worth its salt is going to have their signs looking good. They don't need seven of us that aren't in the business community telling them how to advertise their business. If they're worth a dime and they want to be here a while, they're going to have good-looking signs out there. And I think it's an overreach, but I'm going to vote for it's better than nothing at all. And if nothing else, there are a couple signs in Deltona that are so obnoxious to me that I'm voting for this strictly to see those taken down as soon as possible, because they do anything but make our community look terrible, and I believe they're intentional. I don't believe they're accidental or whatever else, they're just intentionally amusing. You know, a sign that's on a piece of property and there's no business there, and don't even know if there is a business anywhere, is just arbitrary. It just made to make our city look bad, and I personally don't, I take offense at it, but this should correct that. So there being any discussion, we'll open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public want to speak concerning the sign ordinance? Well, I figured you, Larry. Go ahead.
Larry Kent, District 7, Berry. I don't have a problem with sign ordinances. And, I don't have a problem with sign ordinances, and I'm here to help. I do have some problems with this ordinance, the reason being is I knew that the train left the gate and this was going to happen, and after that, I knew I was going to have to start applying for variances, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Can we turn that off? You know, I've been working on the sign ordinance, just like the ordinance committee, just like staff.
Larry, that shouldn't be on. Go ahead, go ahead and speak.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so...
You can shut that off.
So in order to get the ordinance, not the ordinance, but the variance, I said I've got to start preparing for this new Burger King restaurant that we're putting on Deltona Village, and so I started doing research. I started doing research, I came up with the holy grail of what really is correct for signs, and I found some unbelievable information. I emailed it to all of you, and I understand moving forward tonight, but you need to look at that stuff, because it's the science behind it. And to say that, you know, why do we have pole signs? Why do we get rid of pole signs? It was because we kept copying ordinances. We copied ordinance after ordinance after ordinance from different communities, just because we were having problems, so we figured, well, we'll accept theirs. And, you know, the way I look at that is, that's kind of like being in school, and you're not doing well, and you don't do your homework, so you go to school the next day and you copy somebody's homework. It's kind of like almost a form of cheating. And you're not going to be able to copy the homework of the person who is making straight A's. You're going to find a C student or a D student, you don't even know what the answers are correct or not, and you're going to copy it. And that's what we've done over the years with these different ordinances, I think. I've got, the big issues I have with the current ordinance have to do with size of signs, and that's addressed very well in the information that I sent to you guys, and I would encourage you to look at that. We don't have time to look at it now, because this is moving fast and it's going to happen. But I'm going to have to apply for a variance to increase a sign by 14 and 1/2 feet, 14 and 1/2 feet. Now, Frank DeMarche told me that the racetrack, which we're going to be contiguous to with the Burger King, they had to apply for sign variances. So I don't know how much more they increased their size, I don't know if it was 14 and 1/2 feet, or if it was 42 feet, but then they had to apply for a variance on Saxon. And that tells you that there's a problem. That tells you that we need to increase the size of those signs. And when you read the scientific data that I sent to you guys, which was performed by universities with federal funding in order to get the sizes right, and they use those same sizes for the signs on the highway, and when you go down the highway, you can see where you're going, because they're huge signs. They don't look huge, because they're so high out of the way, but that's the way signs are.
But on this ordinance here, Larry, tonight, I mean, I don't mean to cut you short, but we haven't had a chance to go through all that. There's a lot of heavy math in there and all, but on this ordinance tonight, because we want to move through this, what, did you see any glaring real glitches in here?
Well, the first thing, I'm concerned about getting a variance. I really don't know if I'll get a variance. I am what I classify as a not-in-the-in crowd, I'm one of your Deltona deplorables. And I say that because of the abuse I've taken over the years, and specifically on one sign. You know, two years ago, I met with Chris Bowley and Tom Pauls when I was getting ready to change out my sign at Justin Square to go from a reader board sign to a digital sign. It made a huge difference. My tenants needed that so bad. After 2008, I went from about 90% occupancy down to 35% occupancy. That's not good. And even when you have no debt, or very little debt, it's hard to hang on to these properties when that happens. And I had to save the tenants that stayed there, and I had to have something in order to help the new tenants that were coming in, and set myself aside from everybody else of people who want to come to my property and sell us another property. And, you know, that was an extremely expensive sign to put in. Yeah, I did it with grant money, it was my kid's inheritance, they're not too happy about that grant that I gave to my tenants, but that's what happened.
So you're worried about the...
Well, the digital sign I have at Burger King was four feet by eight feet. This was a 10-foot opening. When you go wider, you need to go higher also. It's like buying a TV set. When you get a bigger TV set, they just don't get wider and wider and wider, but that's how tall it is. And I went to Chris and Tom Pauls, and I said, this is what I want to do, I understand I'm going to need a variance, will you support the variance? And they told me, no, you have to prove a hardship. And, man, it was a huge hardship. We went from 90% to 35% occupancy. I had people dropping like flies, and it only makes sense to put in a good sign. I spent tens of thousands of dollars to put that sign in. It should have been one or two feet taller. I couldn't do it. I could have tried to get the variance, they told me they would not support the variance. But I could have still come to you guys, but I didn't have the time. Time was ticking away. I have to order these things months ahead of time, then get them shipped in, and I don't know that I'll be able to get that variance for this 14 and 1/2 feet. That's what it comes down to.
All right, I'm going to have to cut you short.
No, no, no. I don't cut you short. I would appreciate the courtesy here.
I will, but get to the point about what we're making a decision on tonight.
Well, my sign at the Burger King on Alcam, that was 96 square feet. I could not put that sign on this property either, because it doesn't qualify with this ordinance. The footage is too small, and if you were to look at what I gave you, I think at some point, real quick, you'll be able to expand the footages that you have on here. That's what I'm getting at.
Electronic signs?
No, on any signs.
Any signs, okay.
On any signs.
Yeah, I know.
The second thing has to do with these window signs, and the 50% and 25% that was concerning you. And I'm very concerned about it, because I counted up windows at Justin Square today, and I've got about a dozen windows that are, don't qualify right now. They're going to be illegal window signs when this thing passes. I went down to Deltona Plaza, and there were a couple dozen of them like that. And, you know, these, they're good-looking signs, and these tenants spent a lot of money to do it, and I, you know, I've got 12 windows like that. You know, when this goes into effect, I'm probably going to get a code enforcement issue on 12 windows at $500 a day, which is $6,000 a day. You know, I can afford it, it's not sustainable though.
Larry, I have to cut you off. I've got other people who want to speak, and I've got to get moving on this, and I've given you 10 minutes, so, I mean, that's well over it. I appreciate the work you've done on it. And bring those specific issues to us. If there's got to be something done with this, we could, I wish staff would tell me that the variance shouldn't take that long. I mean, I don't, I, thank you for your comments. I can't, Larry, please.
Some people get the variance because they're light. I didn't get it, I don't know why, I couldn't...
All right, we'll look at that issue, but we have to move on right now. Thank you.
Good, I've got one more thing.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up, Larry. Come on, please, work with me, okay? I've got a commission.
Okay, John.
They give me directions, okay?
Okay, John.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else, or somebody else had a hand? Yes, ma'am, come on.
Can I speak from here?
No, you have to come to the mic, give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Laverne Williams, and I'm from the city of Chicago, Illinois. So does that qualify me to speak?
Absolutely.
It sure does, but I don't know, we won't hold that against you, but we don't have anything to do with signs in Chicago.
Thank you. No, I have a question with, in regards to the new ordinance that's coming up. If you have a section in your ordinance for temporary signs, how can your department, how is he going to justify writing up a, what is that?
Violation.
Violation. I.e., let's use the example, is this young lady...
If there's no permit on file, he'll know.
Well, that'll be difficult for him to track, based on that Supreme Court ruling, if I'm not mistaken. If you can't, if you have to put a date on a temporary sign, then it's illegal for you to disqualify that person from putting the sign up, if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong, but if you could look into that. Number two, if, if you have some businesses that have the...
Ma'am?
Just a que, oh, should I sit?
Well, no, you were starting, go ahead and finish. You started looking backwards.
Well, I think your code enforcement person would be able to respond to that. If you have signs up that are temporary, how can you enforce it if there's a date that it has to be up and a date that it has to be down, based on the Supreme Court ruling? I think they said that that was illegal, and I could be wrong.
We'd have to ask our attorney that, but we can look into that.
Yes, sir.
If it's illegal, we can't do it, period.
Right.
That's it. Okay.
Number two, if you have businesses that have temporary signs up, the stick-on signs, and excuse me, I'm nervous, so...
That's okay.
If I'm not speaking clearly, please forgive me. And you have some businesses that had the variance, and some businesses that did not have the variance, but they're acceptable. How can you go back and penalize the ones that are doing the same thing that if another company, you know, based on this young man?
We wouldn't do that. We wouldn't go back and penalize somebody on temporary signs. You either have it for, or you don't have it for temporary sign. If it's existing sign, you talking about a permit sign?
Well, in regards to the Burger King sign that this young man is talking about.
He's already got permits for those, and they're up.
Oh.
He's talking about a new one. He's talking about a new billing he may bill.
Then I'll walk away from that one.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Would you check on that, Skip?
Sir?
Would you check on that? She made a valid point, it was a Supreme Court ruling about a date, but I don't...
Well, when you issue the permit for the sign, you put a date on it, and if it's a 90-day sign, count 90 days.
That's what I thought, but she's saying that that's illegal. I understood her to say that was illegal.
The illegality comes, and this is just a rule of thumb way of understanding it, if you have to read the sign to know what the rules are, then you're basing it on the content of the sign.
Okay.
So if you can do it without having to look at the sign and see what it says, then you're probably okay.
All right, so we got a motion on the floor. City manager, do you have something you want to add?
Yes, I wanted to ask Chris a clarification. We've talked a lot about a variance, but I think what we're talking about is not a variance, but...
You're correct.
In the sign code, it allows for an alternative sign approval process.
You're absolutely right.
That is different than a variance showing a hardship.
Right, and that's why I stood back up here, is I just wanted to make a clarification. A variance is to the zoning ordinance for a hardship. This flexible 102-11 is the flexibility to not go through the variance process. When you want to, when a sign contractor or a landowner wants to propose signage that doesn't comport to these standards, it's not a variance. Then you just submit a sign plan, it goes to DRC, comes to the commission, it's very open and flexible.
Okay, that goes with size too?
Yes, sir.
Answers Larry's question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I saw location and all that. Okay.
And just so, just one more clarification is for window signage in meeting with the DBA, it was 25% for covering for both permanent and temporary signs. They left the temporary signs at 25%. The permanent signs were increased to 50%. So that gives businesses 25% more than they had originally.
All right. Commissioner Suker, Alcantara, and we're going to vote.
And I'm just going to go back to the simple question of the size. Let's just talk size. Why did we choose the numbers we have here for the size?
Just based on comparative research in central Florida.
Why, okay, I'm only going, guys, I'm only saying this because we got a business owner sitting right here that says, listen, he's not about to open one, he's about to open possibly another one. And he's saying, guys, listen, the sign, it's just not big enough. The Burger King one down on Alcam, that's 96 square feet. Why would we not just go ahead and say, okay, you know what, let's make it 96 feet? Show me the negatives of making that 96 feet.
The only thing is, you're making a citywide ordinance, but this one has the flexibility option in it to propose something that you want. If you put 96, somebody will come in at 120. You know, you put 120, somebody comes in at 140. You're always...
But if it makes sense, it makes sense.
But for staff, we're not the judge on whether it makes sense or not, it's whether their business and their prototype are set. A lot of times, they go like McDonald's, for example, will have set sign contractors nationwide, may not have a lot, maybe five, and they have a prototypical signage for various situations, all the way from Boca Raton to, I don't know, you know, some community in the Pacific Northwest, nationwide. They'll pick whatever prototype that fits. So this is flexible enough to work with that. If for some reason their prototype doesn't work within these parameters, then they can propose under their sign plan a variance, or not a variance, a flexible path to take for signage approval. And it could be large, it could be small.
You have to pick a number, you just, you have to pick a number, so...
And that's my point, if we just have to pick a number, you're hearing a guy say right now, he has two about to go up, and he doesn't even need that much, we just need a little bit more. My question is, is why would we not just say, okay, look, 90's not that much bigger, or split the difference, let's make them a little bit bigger, to save some of... How long's that process you're talking about right now?
And one DRC schedule, and then one...
How long is that? Give me the weeks.
You know, two weeks to get it scheduled, and then you're in front of the commission for the next hearing, next available hearing.
So it could be possibly four to six weeks, up to eight weeks.
Could be 30 days.
Okay. So my question is, is it just why? I'm just saying, I just say, I don't understand why. I just, why can't you make it...
Well, actually, the members of the DBA worked with the city attorney at the time to write that language, that section. So that was a recommendation as an alternate process, and then they added the one meeting only, a DRC one meeting only at the city commission, so...
I just don't understand why you just don't make it...
I understand, but that's not helping us make a decision. We had a decision to make on this, it's before us...
But just make one more amendment to the thing.
We didn't make another amendment to it.
Or withdraw, make another one with a double amendment.
This needs to be workshop.
No, we have gone through this a million times, and there's going to be questions like this all night long, and it'll go on forever.
Mayor?
So, yes, ma'am?
Can I just make a comment to...
I have to go down this list, and then I'm cutting it off, and I said that twice now. We've changed everything else tonight, so I'll change something else. Commissioner Alcantara, quickly, please.
Do temporary signs have to be permanent?
You do have to get a temporary sign permit, yes.
Unless it's exempt.
So unless it's exempt?
Right, unless it's exempt, yes, sir.
Are the window signs, those are not exempt, right?
Correct. I think we put a dimension in there for that, as an exempt sign.
That's the 25 and 50, some are permanent, some are temporary.
Because I wanted to go back to what Vice Mayor said about, if a business is constantly changing signs, you know, it's kind of, it makes it tough on them, every time they're going to put a sign, they have to come and get a permit. Why can't we just let the business put whatever signs they want?
Hang a banner or whatever.
As far as temporary signs.
And they do. I mean, currently, for example, like a convenience store, they'll permit their permanent signs, and then, and we have a discussion here about snipe signs. So then they'll just put up whatever the vendor sends them, you know, beer distributor, and they'll put them on the windows, they'll hang them on the gas pumps, they'll hang them out, you know, on the poles out in front, and those are snipe signs, and then code enforcement will go by and ask them to remove them. So we're just trying to provide some kind of framework with this. And it is amendable over time, you know, if, once you get it adopted, as things change, you might want to change components out.
I think we should make it easier for folks, businesses wanting to have temporary signs and change them out, make it as easy as possible, so they don't have to constantly come back for permits.
Yeah. When it comes to window signs, though, I think they could change them, maybe nobody would know. We don't keep track of what's in the window, as long as they stay within those percentages.
Did you close public participation?
Yes, I did close public participation. Commissioner Bradford, Hertzberg, Coniker, and then we are done.
Okay. Again, I think you guys did a great job, and I appreciate you guys going through this. But this is framework for us to sit here and do what we're doing. That's why we all have a great opinion up here, and I think it's great that we're able to bat this around. Let me say this, if I have a business that wants to bring in, let's say a big sign, the size of a Tanger Outlet sign on I-4, you are going to see me doing some backflips on stage, okay? That's a multimillion-dollar business coming in. Those signs, I think that sign was over a million dollars for that sign. And if a business is bringing in a sign that size, wow, do I welcome you. And a lot of times, the enemy is, the bigger the sign, the bigger the business. I don't want to be restricting businesses to the type of sign that they're going to have coming in here. We need to have, you know, and it goes back to that United States Sign Code, that actually has done studies that says, on a two-lane road, on a four-lane road, on a 45 mile per hour, on a 25, that says, this is the right-sized sign, so that you're not impeding traffic, you're not putting pedestrians and individuals in a hazardous area. There is a reason that Pennsylvania went through so much work to put their sign code in. I think that us just taking and adopting someone and making a few revisions to it, if we're going to do it, we got to do it right. So let's just pass it to pass it, and then let's just waste our time and do a million revisions. To me, that's not the solution. We don't teach our kids that, and we shouldn't be doing it. If we're going to do it, we need to do this right the first time. So if that means that we need to take this and sit down and have a discussion, and not feel like, okay, you got a few minutes and we got to vote on it, we need to do that. We need to look at the universal sign code. How many people looked at that, not just the methology, and looked at it and said, you know what, that makes a lot of sense? Okay? Anybody?
I did.
I mean, a lot of it makes a lot of sense, and a lot of it, you know, is, you know, jumble-jumble that this can be brought into, but right now, we're throwing numbers out there and hoping it sticks on the wall, and we don't even know if it's the right numbers. And now we're going to try to pass something, and then we'll revise it later. So let's just waste our time. And it's wasting staff's time, and it's wasting DBA's time. And, you know, we could have been discussing somebody, something else in a meeting tonight. So that's just my opinion, but I won't vote on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Hertzberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two comments for Commissioner Sukup. With not having a limit on the signs, we always talk about the Deltona, Deltona is a very much of a residential city and everything that we do business-wise affects the residents. And where Mr. Kent is proposing to put his businesses and where, you know, our commercial areas are, that's, those signs should definitely be allowed to have larger copy and bigger signs and so forth. But when you're talking about not having any minimum regulations and you've got someone that pops a business in the middle of a residential area and converts one of the homes along wherever into a business and it's approved, and you're going to allow them to put a massive LED lit sign that's going to be on all night long in a residential area, I think that that's part of the thing that I look at for, unless we have, you know, specific rules and regulations for that. I'm glad that we have this option in here because I really feel like in some of our areas, you need huge signs because all we have is open land. But in other areas, especially with the copy being LED and flashing and bright and light, we've had people complain about putting lights at ballparks that are in the middle of residential areas and not wanting them to put up there. And the other, the comment, Commissioner Bradford, I understand your frustration. This makes me want to pull my hair out as well and it's been going on as long as I've been elected. However, what we have now is nothing that we're enforcing. Am I correct, Mr. Baker? So how long have we been enforcing nada? A year?
Two.
A year?
Two years.
So two years, we have not enforced any signage in this city. We have not enforced the horrible signs that are up there. We've not enforced anybody putting snipe signs anywhere, signs in the rights of way, signs everywhere, and signs not coming down. We don't have any guidelines right now, nothing, and we haven't for two years. And I'm not willing to go for another year of back and forth, back and forth, and giving code enforcement no direction at all on what to work on in terms of at least dealing with the horrible signs that we have up there now because right now, there's no direction to do anything. And if we want to go ahead and continue that for another year, and that's the wish of the commission or another six months and not have any enforcement, just carry on and see what the future of the signs are because responsible businesses keep theirs looking good. It's the horrible ones that we all know about that are.
If we get the vote, we'll know. Commissioner Coniker?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the standard size, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Hertzberg. We came up with that size, like Mr. Bulley said, they looked at Central Florida, what are the typical signs used? The DBA looked at it and they're all businessmen. And I know Mr. Kent doesn't agree, but Robert's rule says not everybody is on the winning side and if you aren't on the winning side, you have to support that side anyway. So I'm sure he'll support it. But it's a citywide ordinance for standard size, but they listened to Larry and they came up with their out. If you read 102-11, alternative sign approval process, Larry, that's your savior, in order to provide for additional flexibility and innovation for signs. You fill out the application, you send it to them, it's much easier than a variance. So they've given all the businesses an out for that. We have to have a standard size. Where you just, you know, somebody's just going, oh, no standard size, and put some giant sign, like she said, in a residential area. This is your standard size, you do this application for an alternative sign approval process, you're covered. So I don't see the problem with moving forward to this. I do think we did it right. I think they did it right by putting that in there, 102-11, take the time to read it tonight. That is an excellent thing in there that for benefit of all businesses, want a different type of sign.
Thank you, sir. Most have been made and seconded and we've had public participation and plenty of commission comments. Would you read the ordinance, please, Mr. Fowler?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 29-2016. An ordinance of the City of Deltona, Florida repealing the existing Chapter 102 signs of Land Development Code of the City of Deltona and replacing it with a new Chapter 102 signs. Amending Chapter 70, Section 70-30, definitions of the Land Development Code of the City of Deltona, providing signage regulations consistent with applicable federal case law, providing for purpose and intent, providing for regulations as to application permitting and enforcement, providing definitions, providing permanent, temporary, and handheld signs, time and place and manner regulations, providing for sign maintenance, vesting, variance, acts of eminent domain and appeals, providing for signage removal, providing for exempt, de minimis signs, and prohibited signs, and providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Would you allow the commission to vote, please? Motion passes four to three. Okay. That shows you exactly what sign notices are like, I guess. I mean, that's a pure indication. City Attorney, do you have any comments? City Manager?
Just one comment. I just want to remind everybody that next Monday, we have a public workshop on our parks capital improvement program. It is at 6:00 PM here at City Hall in the chambers.
And prior to that, is that the Halifax groundbreaking?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. All right. Commissioner Sukup?
Okay, I got a couple of things tonight. First thing, the reason I was late, because I got the privilege once again to judge Mr. and Mrs. Deltona High School tonight, was the interview portion. And it's funny, when you ask eight young men, young women, I get to ask them one question of my own and that's, what's one thing you would change about Deltona or one thing you would add to Deltona? The comments you get, it's very, I think we should bring in a ton of kids and ask them this question, but there was something that stuck out tonight. A young lady by the name of Precious, who's in a wheelchair. When I asked her that question, she said, listen, she has a family of 10, she lives with 10, her mom and 10 kids. There are basically, her mom's a false mom, so they bring in a bunch of kids. And she said, when they go to the park, she has to sit there in the wheelchair because there's nothing geared for her at the park. And that just, that just drove a nail right through me. She says there are swing sets out there now that can hook on to a wheelchair so you don't have to be picked up and slid into like a childproof thing. We're dealing with, this is a junior sitting here who, whose only wish is that she could go to the park and swing on a swing. And I know that we have the parks thing coming up on Monday, but, you know, that, that just, that stuck. I mean, you don't realize, you don't realize it that I can get on a swing anytime I want, but this young lady, who's a junior, cannot swing on a swing in Deltona. So I just wanted to bring that out because that really sent something through me today. Second of all, I also called Mr. Roland this week. This is not a knock against Mr. Roland, this is probably a knock more against us. Deltona Alliance Church replaced their AC unit. And due to manpower, we hired out Universal and to do the permitting, I heard it brought up today. And they said it was the most rude person that showed up to their building and made multiple comments that were off color, out of line to them at the church, which I notified Mr. Roland, he said he's going to take care of it, but it's just one of those things that goes back to, and we're talking about staff, we just saw the thing that we're understaffed. We keep driving economic development in the city. We're going to have more inspections coming forward. I would like, prefer that the people who are doing these inspections, we already know how temperamental that it is anyway, that they represent the city and they represented the highest, they weren't even wearing City of Deltona clothing. So, you know, who knows who they are, they're just coming to do a.
Contractors.
Contractor. So I wanted to bring that to your guys' attention that Universal, if this is true, when he researched that this is true, to me, I would like to move forward, not use them again, but that's just me. Second of all, when we do the agendas, I mean, this is a prime example, we're sitting here at 9 o'clock, 9:10. I would encourage, you're beating us up because we moved this around, but the principal who's got to get up in the school tomorrow would still be sitting here. I encourage the city manager that when she does a, an agenda, to look and see what could be taking the longest time and let's hurry up and let's get some of these people in and out of here. It's only fair to them. Next, I have a huge, huge issue with something that went out this week. And I hope you guys will all agree with me, but you might not.
Message, what?
In everybody's water bill, there was a flyer that went out, advertising Halifax Health Hospitals grand opening, basically marketing Halifax Hospital and the fact that a business came here. Now, if you've talked to Florida hospital people, you talked to Central Florida regional, you talked to any other business in the city who has not given that, this is a major problem to me. Because now, we just marketed a business, a business that's not even going to pay taxes in our city, but we just marketed a business in our city for free to, what, almost 40,000 homes? And I say, once again, I believe the city manager went above and beyond her authority and should never have authorized this. Because now, you know, Commissioner Knobek brings it up all the time, you've set a precedence now for every business down the road. You've got the honest one automotive now. Are we going to send out and through the water bill for them? Are any other business, we can look through here at all the other business owners, are we going to do, are we going to do the same thing for them? Guys, this is what I'm telling you, you know, I get beat up here all the time because I feel like I'm beating down the city manager, but this is once again, a prime example of abuse of power and should be dealt with and taken care of. It's completely wrong.
Would you want her to respond? Because I didn't, I didn't get my bill, I didn't see it, sorry.
It's in all the water bills.
Do you want to respond?
Mine is, I mean, yeah, I don't know how you respond to that.
City Manager?
Yes, I would like to respond. I think there's been a lot of good that's been happening within the city. The water bill, there was an insert saying that, you know, the Sea of Deltona welcomes Halifax Hospital, which we do, we've talked about it a number of times. All we're doing and saying is that, yes, they did have, they're having an event, we support that, their job creation. It's not, in my mind, an advertisement, but it's part of getting the word of all the good that's happening in the city.
Okay, and going back to my point, have we done that for any other business in the city? Have we used, hey, listen, I talked to Ruben Cologne, who serves on a bunch of panels, and he said that one of the boards, I forget which panel or board he was working on, requested to use the water bills as a motive to get some news out and was denied. Yet we allow a business that we advertise for, and listen, I got nothing against Halifax or what they're doing and I want them to be successful. The problem is, we talk about it all the time, you do it now for one, are you going to do it for every other one? It was out of line, it should have been brought before us so that we could have told her, this is not what a normal manager is going to do, pick one business out and allow them to do this. So I wanted to get that out.
You know, your point's well taken. I don't know that we've ever done it before and I do not support putting out private things like that unless it's something the city is sponsoring.
Well, can I just, can I just respond to it? We had a meeting with Jerry Mays and we talked about putting some economic incentive things onto the city webpage. I understand your point completely, Commissioner. I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea, it's not something that's currently in policy. I think we should have a conversation about maybe offering that as an economic incentive and putting that, something like that into the package for economic incentives, because it doesn't really cost us anything to do that. With that said, you're correct, she probably should have sought authorization.
Who paid for that piece of paper and the printing? Okay, the taxpayers.
All right, we're going to stop this because this is Commissioner Conick, you brought up a good point, I support what you, can you give us a report on what the costs involved? Was that to the city and your justification? Get it to all of us, because I don't agree that we should do it for one and not the other. Florida Hospital and Halifax have, have competing interests and we shouldn't choose one or the other. Should have made it generic about healthcare or something, but that's for another time and we're not going to debate this issue. Is that all you answer?
And then I was forced to leave a little early last week and, you know, I just got very disappointed by what I heard. If you know anything about business, anything about business, you will realize that that community center will never make money its first year. You know, you can Google anything you want, go back to any information you want, every business who opens up expects to lose money the first year. You hope somewhere in the second year to get somewhere to break even and third year, hopefully make money. My biggest concern about this community center is the fact that there's no Plan B. And is it a coincidence that the expenses completely are identical, identical to the money we're going to make? And when you do a simple math, simple math, simple math, if you're going to bring in a million dollars, and that's, remember, the more people that you bring in, the more expenses you're going to have, to bring in to make a million dollars, if it's just pure profit, you're not paying for everything else, first thing is, you needed 48 hours a week at $400 an hour, that will give you the $19,000 a month, I mean, a week, to get you to the million dollar profit. If you think we're going to do 48 hours at $400 an hour, you've got something coming to you. This, the expectations on this thing are completely unrealistic. And I will sit here next year, but I don't want to have to say I told you so, because see, it's already built, we're building this thing, so it has to be successful. I don't believe we have the right person involved to run it. If, if you look into the resume, if you look into the resume, you will see what I have seen, okay? This is, this is not.
All right, we're not going to sit here and attack.
I'm not attacking, I'm just saying, I don't personally believe we have the right person running it. And once again, the fact that a city manager will come up here and tell me that that building is going to be cost neutral. And for, Mayor, you made a comment that really bothered me when you said, oh yeah, the first year is going to be the greatest year because everyone's going to be a part of it. That's, that's not how business works. This building right here, it's expensive, it's going to be expensive to use. We call it a community center, but it's not a community center. Let's just get that out of the way, it's not a community center. If you want to rent this, it can be your community center. So me, the taxpayer, who's going to help pay the $9 million note on it, now I'm going to have to pay, what, if I want it at night, I'm going to pay $400, $500 an hour. So all I'm saying, guys, is please, the ship has sailed out the dock. We, this, this community center is going, the center is going up. Please be prepared for failing. It's going to fail. Please. The, make sure the expectation of there, if we're not preparing for this in the budget, I'm telling you, I don't want to have to sit here a year from now saying, guys, I told you so. I'm saying, look, we need to look at this. Guys, this thing, we need this thing not to lose as much money as it possibly can, which means you have to have the right person running it. And it has to be managed by someone who knows business. And apparently, we are making a mistake and I keep going back to some of the mistakes we're making, here's just another one, and I believe this is a huge mess. So that's, I just had to get that out of listening to your conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hertzberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, just a few things. Attended the Sheriff Chitwood's first CompStat meeting last Thursday at 8:30 in the morning and it was really very, very interesting. Glad that he's holding them at Deltona City Hall. Next CompStat meeting is going to be the 27th at 8:00.
Do you have to stop doing them?
We would hate to, yeah. CompStat's every two weeks until he gets it rolled and then he'd probably go to once a month, last I heard.
Yeah, yeah, he's going to, that's what he said, as of that day, it was the 27th at 8:30 in the morning. He's going to be doing the next one, which is very interesting. It's where they basically discuss all the crime that's gone on in the City of Deltona and even in some of the surrounding areas and the different cases and how they've either been resolved or in the process of being resolved and what else is going on. I think it's a great interaction for the residents. I think if the residents, you know, if anyone's interested in interacting with your sheriff's department and really seeing what the crime levels are and how they're, how things are worked and how they respond and how they solve some of these and which ones are still outstanding is, was very, very interesting to me and I'm, I'm very, very happy that the sheriff is, is doing that here in Deltona. I think it's a great service for the residents and it really helps you understand what kind of crime goes on. And it was interesting for, you know, the large amount of 34,000 homes that we have here, the, the amount of crime was not as bad as I thought it was going to be. It was very, very interesting to see what goes on and what the hot areas, the hot pockets are and where, where there's a lot more concentration of crime. Interesting there as well. Secondly, I wanted to say that tomorrow's the State of the County address and I guess some people are going to that. And on Wednesday, the League of, Volusia League of Cities is doing emotional intelligence and parliamentary training at Daytona State College. If anyone's interested and still would like to sign up for that, there's still 8:30 in the morning, the emotional intelligence seminar is first and then parliamentary training is after that and it should end at about 12:30. There's no charge for that, that's put on by the Volusia League of Cities and the Institute of Government. And lastly, with many of us seeing what happened in Orange City with the fires and, and what a horrible, horrible situation that was, I know that we, we participated, our fire department participated along with other, all the other municipalities and their departments. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for our fire department and all the others and, and all the public safety people and everyone that risked their, their lives and, and put forth that effort to really work that most horrible situation. And for anybody that, that wants to talk about negatively about the fire department or the police department or anything else, until you're in a situation that you need them, you know, you can, you can say what you want, have your personal opinions on stuff, but when it's your backyard that's burning and when it's your family that has to be evacuated and when it's your family members that are in hospice that you can't get to because the places, the roads are on fire and you have family members in there that are deathly ill, and you can't get in there, and you're grateful that the deputies escorted them in, you know, let's just give credit where credit is due. And I, for one, am very, very grateful for all our first responders for everything that they do. Kind of brings it very close to home. Thanks, Mayor.
Commissioner Honaker?
Oh, please don't tell me to be brief.
You what?
Got your coffee and everything? No, I won't be that long. If you're wondering, this is a Ukrainian dress shirt. My wife's mother gave it to me. She's from Ukraine, and this is for Easter, since we weren't all together yesterday. Happy Easter, everyone. Relay for Life. Chip is out of town, so he couldn't be there, so we didn't put him on tonight's agenda. We're looking at the first meeting in May, that he can be available, but between Top Shelf, which at Top Shelf, they raised $868.50, and the team raised $675, so that's a total of $1,543.50 for Relay for Life so far. I'll be out of town for the Monday's workshop and Halifax groundbreaking. I'm going to hate to miss that. I did want to make a quick comment on a couple of things that we talked about at last week's meeting, the stormwater assessment fee. It's not, it wasn't rushed to get it on this agenda, because apparently, we pay in arrears. You'll know what that financing is. So, if we were to rush it, it doesn't save us anything, because what we're paying is the past interest. But the longer we take to get that on the table, then that interest will start compiling again. And if you're wondering, it's $529,000 a year we pay, and you're looking at that community center. So, if we can pay that loan off, reduce that stormwater assessment fee, I know the funds can't be used there, but follow my train of thought. We reduce that, okay? Now, we implement that fire services assessment fee that I was talking about last year, and the vice mayor mentioned. That's going to ease that on the residents a little bit. Okay, you saved me. You reduced my stormwater assessment fee from 108 to 85. But yes, we have to implement a fire services assessment fee. That's going to pay part of the fire department, which is taken out of the general fund. So, now, we have 500,000 more a year that can go towards that, just in case that community center isn't productive the first year. But we just need, we have 11 and a half million dollars. I just want to make a point that we should take 5 million, it's a little less than 5 million, actually. If you do that loan of 530,000 a year, I round it off, times 13 years, because it's not paid off till 2030, that's $6,900,000. We owe a little less than 5 million on it right now, so you're going to save about $2 million for the residents, and that's 530,000 a year we're saving them off of stormwater. And it still needs mad money to work with each year if we reduce it to $85. So, just things to look at between now and when we start talking about the budget. It's a viable solution, but I really would like to see that on an agenda soon to be discussed so we can pay it off before this interest keeps building up. We've got to make Mays' payment, but then after you make that payment, that interest is going to start building up till the next payments due. So, it's really important to the residents. And my closing comment is just, everyone have a great evening. Sorry the meeting took so long, but it was important things, I think, for the business community on the signs to be discussed.
Thank you. Commissioner Alpert, there?
Just want to, you know, over the weekend, we, millions of folks around the world observed the resurrection of Christ, and I wrote a little something, but first, I want to read real quick. Matthew 27, 50 through 31, 50 through 53. "And Jesus cried out again with a loud voice and yielded up his spirit. Then behold, the veil of the temple was torn in two from top to bottom, and the earth quaked, and the rocks were split, and the graves were opened, and many bodies of the saints who had fallen asleep were raised. And coming out of the graves after his resurrection, they went into the holy city and appeared to many." And I wrote this little thing that came to me as I read this scripture. "Our physical earthly bodies are graves to our true essence, which is dormant in the vast majority of us, myself included. Although Jesus came to us as man, the body had no dominion over him. His true nature was not constrained by the body. Because he was perfect, he was able to be one with the Father that was within him, that is, within you and I. When Jesus looked around, he saw through our Father's eyes. When he listened, he listened with our Father's ears. When he spoke, he spoke with our Father's tongue. Jesus didn't have to come out of the grave, because he was never in a grave. The tomb can be seen as a symbol of earth, material, physical body, flesh. Jesus went into the tomb, but came out of it also in all power and glory. We are in this world, but we are not of this world. Too many saints are asleep even as they go about their day. But the Messiah will come again and wake us all up as he did with the saints after his resurrection. The Messiah will come and set the world straight." I also wanted to recognize all the firefighters that responded to the Orange City Fire. And I hope that if anyone was hurt, that they recover and heal quickly. I also wanted to ask the chief of the fire department, I asked him before the meeting started, about what it would take to institute a burn ban. You know, we have humidity right now is low, and.
Sir, okay. Tonight's been a special night, anyway. Go ahead.
Okay. Basically, if we wanted to implement a burn ban, it would just take a resolution of the commission and for y'all to vote to institute the burn ban.
Do you feel that if we were to do that, that we would be rightfully, we would be okay with doing it? Are we justified in doing a burn ban right now?
I don't, I don't think you wouldn't be justified. I mean, I haven't got to the point where I would recommend it yet, but there are a lot of things that I'm concerned about. You know, it is really dry out right now. And like you talked about, the humidity is extremely low, and the winds have been extremely high, so that dries things out even more quickly. Some of the conditions that we look at are some of those. Some of the other conditions we look at is the drought index, which is at about half right now. It's around the 400 mark on an 800 scale, and the fire readiness level is at about half as well, at about a three on a scale of five. The readiness level is forestry's indication of how much they predict fire will occur and how many resources they have available to fight that, those fires. Some of the other things we look at is available resources in the area, how much are they committed? Right now, all of forestry's resources are available for our district. Our resources are available. We are sending one truck every day to help out with mopping up Orange City's fire, which is probably not going to be totally out until we get some rain, but it's going to take a little while to do that. And so, I've also been speaking with the county, and we had a meeting today with the county and forestry over wildfire stuff. And, you know, that's where I learned that forestry still has all their resources available. So, would you be unwise in doing it? No. Not really to the point where I would recommend it yet, but I may be back here in two weeks saying, yes, we need to do it. So, I think the biggest thing that needs to happen is we need some rain. And if we don't get any over the next couple of weeks, then I would encourage that we do it sooner than later.
Well, with the Orange City Fire, and I think that it would be wise to institute a burn ban and place that, have it indefinitely, and place that responsibility on you of when you think is best to reverse that ban. So, I would like to make a motion to have a burn ban and give the city manager and the chief of the fire department the authority to come back to us with a reversal if necessary.
Second. Commissioners, we made rules, we broke them just about all of them tonight, so I don't see why we shouldn't break this one. We just had our fire chief, who is our public safety guy, tell us he didn't think he wants. You want to overrule what he's saying? Well, no, but he's saying he doesn't think he needs it.
Being proactive instead of reacting.
Okay, motion on the table.
Wait two weeks. It's got to be by resolutions. It's not going to be to that.
He's a professional. Okay. Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 You voted no, okay. Well, we were, but nobody put their name. All right, go ahead and vote. All right, it's 4-3 for a burn ban. Okay, move it along. Go to the next subject. Thanks, chief. Would you institute the necessary paperwork to have submitted to the commission for a resolution?
Then, I wanted to bring up, I believe that we should have quarterly public forums, because in these meetings, when folks come up to speak, we don't really get very personable with them. We can't really go back and forth. But if we had an informal and personal public forums where folks, every quarter, can come to us, ask us questions, we can address their questions then and there, I think that that would do a great deal of opening our government up and making us more personable. So, I would like to make a motion.
I thought you already had them. I thought you already.
No, us as a body have public forums.
That's a public, that's a public meeting. It'd have to be advertised and everything.
And it's every quarter. So, I would like to make a motion to have public forums every quarterly meeting.
All right. Motion been made. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. I'd like to talk about that some more. I kind of got an idea of what you want to do, but I don't know that we can do it that way.
Just like, well, we can bring it up later on.
I know what you're saying, but we need to talk about that.
Then, I wanted to also, I would like to have a workshop to look into the possibility of having a government accountability and transparency committee. So, I would like to have a workshop on that.
A government?
A government accountability and transparency committee. A while ago, we all got an email from Ruben Cologne, giving his suggestion to, for us to create such a task force or committee, but I think we should workshop it and, you know, just let the residents know that we're serious about addressing concerns that come up and opening our government up. So, I just would like to see it on the workshop, if there's no objections.
I don't see any objections. Anybody?
All right. Then, I had a resident contact me. They live near Forsmith and Elcam, the intersection there, and they communicated how that intersection is, has become an issue with people speeding through there. That's, is that a county road? So, what do you guys feel about having speed bumps there? Would that be an issue? Would that make it worse? Would that improve things?
That'd kill somebody.
The speed bumps? If you have enough signage, you have.
You'd have to do a traffic study, then adjust, not on a main.
Because right now, and I drive there, you know, when I go try to play golf, I'm not good, but, and people speed through there all the time, and they have even said that.
I've never seen speed bumps on that type of a speed limit.
Because I saw Old Mill, Old Mill has.
Has a speed table, which is very dangerous, too, but.
It's not a main road.
The only speed bumps, I mean, the only ones that we have is back there on Cloverleaf and.
Let's let the sheriff's office look at it.
And that was just, and that was just an idea that came to me off the, you know, when I came to me. Something that we can do to help make it safer for folks.
Let's let the sheriff's office look at that and come back with a recommendation.
So, can we do that?
Have Captain, you can look at that, would you, Jake?
Then, I wanted to update on the Tivoli improvements, and where are we on that? The intersections.
That's been funded, isn't it? That's ready to go.
When do we start improving that intersection?
Oh, well, first, we have to have the funding identified. It's in a project that is with the Transportation Planning Organization. We are in design, and we're in the queue to receive funding, but we have not received funding yet.
How many, how many phases are there to the improvements?
By phases? I'm not sure what you mean, but we are designing the intersection improvements on Providence and Saxon.
The reason why I asked was because I saw some emails where it talked about two phases. The first phase was the intersection improvements, and the second phase was for widening. And we have told folks that there is no plans to widen it right now. So, my question is, why are there emails that show that there's two phases, one for intersection improvements, and then phase two for widening?
You'll have to show me the emails. I know that there was discussion at one point about widening it.
The whole email?
Okay, I'll get with you and.
Would you provide them to me?
There was an hole where we talked about it, but then we kicked that out, just what was the intersection?
Then, you know, we already addressed the contractor issue, and we're going to do a workshop, hopefully, sooner rather than later, to address those issues. I also, you know, we're talking about businesses and helping bring businesses forward, and the Marsh property, where the Epic Theater sits, I've talked to staff, and I've talked to the Marshes, and what I've learned is that they're not developers. So, it has slowed down development in that area. So, I think it would serve us well and be in our best interest to put the city manager and Team Volusia to task to, and they're willing to, because one of the things I hear, oh, they're asking too much for the land, right? I always, I kept, I've been hearing that, and from talking to them, they're willing. And if you have a developer who can, if we can attract someone to buy the however many acres, all of it, who have the experience of developing this, this is a great location, prime location, then we should put the city manager and Team Volusia to task to get a developer to buy that property. And if it's going to take, it might take us, we're going to have to work with them, because we're going to have to, you've got the sewer, right? But we might have to expand some gas lines, or we might have to do some infrastructure. But let's speed up, speed up. And it's better if the folks know what they're doing, who's owning that land. And, you know, we talk about businesses, but.
If we do it for him, then, then I got to do it for all the other property owners.
Right. It's county utilities out there, anyway.
And I'm not saying a realtor, but if we're trying to bring businesses, what's easier to bring one business at a time and acre here, or to have someone who knows what they're doing and develop the whole thing and get it off the ground? I just think that that will speed things up.
But why this property and not the other property?
It could be any property. We could look at the property across the street. We could look at, but we need to get folks, that's a great location right there.
There's, there's signs, there's people looking at it every day. And what Mr. DeMarish does with his private property is fine, but you've got to have a developer that has the kind of money to come in there and do a major project like that. And I agree with you. We support them all we can, and we'd be ready to jump on it. You talked about the big sign. I'd be ready to agree with.
I want that big tin ground.
Agree with everything, but the point is, we really don't play a hand in that. And I think Jerry and Team Volusia, everybody talks. When they talk Deltona, they talk that interchange right there, and DeMarish has got the biggest chunk of land there.
I just don't understand why it has taken so many years to develop. That's a great location. You've got I-4, the land, Orange City, you've got Halifax. I mean, what's taken so long? You know, and it's always, you know.
And diversity of landowners. There was a distribution center that wanted to come out there, that wanted to split the land, and the landowner didn't want to split it.
Sometimes, yeah. Some of it, you got to get the history of it, but there's been some discussion for years. But go ahead with your.
And then, I also wanted to, can, are we capable of doing these meetings Facebook Live? Because a lot of people don't watch on TV, but they might be on Facebook to have these meetings.
They don't do it on the internet.
Are they, are they live on Facebook?
On Facebook, on the internet?
They are on the internet.
Can we also do, put it on Facebook? Like live? Facebook Live?
I'm not really sure the difference. What I'm saying is, you already can go to our website and you can watch it live.
It's live streamed there.
Okay. And then, another thing is digital TV. We're not on, like, folks who don't have Bright House or, we don't, we're not on digital TV. So, like my grandmother, she has an antenna. She wouldn't be able to see the meetings. You know, is there a way that we can get that done? She doesn't have, no, she doesn't have it in it either.
That's, that's getting into full-blown TV station. That's not.
No, but having, is there, like, is there a way that we can get that? Like, a digital? Is legal?
What I'm saying, does she have a laptop?
No, like digital TV, when you get the.
No, he wants that antenna, the old fashioned antenna. We'd have to get a license, and we'd have to do everything to do that.
That's why my suggestion was, is that if she has a laptop, you can go to our website, and you can punch in, and you can watch it live on our website.
How costly is it to get it on, on digital?
Depends on how much you want to spend to buy her a laptop.
No, no, on, on digital TV, the, and the, the basic.
We have no idea.
Okay, well, that's just, just putting it out there.
That's where we got the deal with Bright House, which is now Spectrum.
All right, that was, that's all I got, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bradford?
You want to go first? You didn't want to go?
No.
All right, I apologize, trust me, I want to get out just as bad as everybody else does, so. A few things, one, which I, I know we said we're going to workshop it, and I want to make sure it is workshop, I think what our contractors talked about tonight, that is concerning to me. And like I said, it's not just the HVAC, it's the roofers, it's the electricals, and it's the plumbers. And I deal with them, and I hear it. And, and one thing that I hear, you know, it's like I heard, you know, Steve brought up tonight, oh, well, when Steve did it, he approved it, and then we get somebody else coming in and, and he says it's not approved. What we should be, so we, we got to have some uniformity here. And what I want our contractors to know, and I had a developer sitting here tonight, and you think the last thing I wanted him to hear was all this controversy. I don't want him to think that the city of Deltona is hard to deal with. So this is a 911, we need to fix that. Another thing that I've heard, and I heard it again tonight, was, and it's happened to me before, when I go and I ask for a form, the one thing I don't want to hear is it's on the wall. And now I heard tonight that somebody called in and they're told, it's on our website. Okay, Grandma, I don't have web service. Not everybody has it at their access. People come from Orlando, people come from Daytona. They don't want to run home and go to the website and download some forms. Okay? We have to be, we are a business, and we have to run this like a business, and this is our customers, and we need to satisfy our customers. I, you know, I think there's a lot of improvements that we made, but I think there's a lot, we, we need to become a lot more business friendly, you know, and I'm tired of the joke that there's a reason we're behind bulletproof glass, so. Okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on. There, I was also informed that there's a new Florida statute coming out, I don't know if we have an answer on that, where we are supposed to be electronic by October. So that is supposed to be done, permitting and buying and paying is for, supposed to be electronic by October of this year. And Jerry, I wanted to see when we were going to, actually, we've been bringing it up a couple of times tonight, and Jerry Mays talked to us about his incentive packages, I don't know when that's going to be back on our agenda. And also, okay, also, it's been referenced a few times in meetings about our Urban Design Master Plan book and our Urban Design Pattern Book. I've looked at them, and honestly, I think some of these are beautiful. There's a lot of gorgeous items there, talk about beautify Deltona. So, the only thing I have with it is, when was those approved? Nineteen seventy?
I don't think so.
No, no, no. But it, it has not been approved. But I, but I think it would be a good thing for us now that we're in, you know, 2017, 18, it'd probably be a really good time for us as a commission to start doing that, especially since we're doing the whole beautify Deltona. Because they're, they're referencing, from what I understand, and, and tell me if I got them backwards, the Urban Design Pattern Book, even though it wasn't approved, but we got the Urban Design Master Plan. So if, if we're going to be referencing it, we might as well fix it and do it so we can, we know whether or not we're going to approve it or not. Another thing is retention ponds, it was brought, and I kind of noticed it, we're on a beautify Deltona kick here tonight. Is there a way to make, I know when you go through Seminole County, they have beautiful retention ponds. They make their retention ponds almost look like little lakes, and they can, people can build around them. Our retention ponds look like just something that was, you know, rectangle thrown down on the ground. And if, I'm thinking if maybe, does it cost us more if we do curb them a little bit and make them more like a lake?
What do you think?
How much more would it be? I mean, because something like that, to me, if I'm going to have a retention pond in an area, I think it would kind of beautify the area if it was made to look more like a lake.
Well, he's coming up, we tried one time, a long time ago, to get St. John's to allow us to put reused water in them so they could be a pond.
Right.
It ain't going to happen, so forget it.
My retention pond is grass, but my pond...
Yeah.
But it means to make it look a little nicer instead of this big eyesore in the backyard. I mean, I mean, how does, how does Seminole County get away with that? I mean, they build a whole community around a retention pond.
Well, it goes down to when they're created, or whether you're retrofitting, but if you're going to create them, it's how you permit them, and then if you're going to retrofit it, then you got a permit modification with the Water Management District. So, in the case of soils, the underlying soils, whether you line them with clay or you line them with a fabric material, synthetic, to line them, to hold water, to become detention facilities, you know, there, there's a cost for that, it's engineering and permitting.
So it can be done, it's just got to be more focused and planned, and, you know, because when I'm, the reason I'm saying it is we're having a retention pond, if I'm not mistaken, at the community center?
It's already there.
It's already there. And is it a big, is it a big rectangle or square block, or is it a nice looking, like it's a lake where, where, you know, people can go and have meetings and gatherings and photos and...
It's been there since 2010, actually. It was permitted that way.
It was...
It's dry, right?
It's been there a long time ago. It's been there forever.
Well, that'd be, that's going to be pretty for pictures. So, I'm sorry, guys, it's been a long day.
No, but, you know, that is something that over time, you, you pay money, not in this budget for the community center, but in the future, you can do a permit modification, you can re-engineer it, and you can reshape it and put a fountain in it over time.
And then that, right, and so that would be more appealing for the community center.
Right, exactly.
Okay. So since we did bring up the advertising and the water bill, I'm going to say I am disappointed that it wasn't brought to our attention. I'm sure there's a really good reason, but since it was, and it is here, one thing that we're talking about, Brian, is advertising it for the community center. So, we have this piece of mail that is going out to forty thousand residents, should we, can we start utilizing it now and maybe putting something in the water bill to help promote our community center for the events and the venues? Because, you know, if somebody gets engaged now, their wedding's going to be next year, and they're going to start picking their venue on now. So it might be advantageous for us to go ahead and start doing that nice advertisement and promote ourselves.
We have done that in the past, just as when we talked about beautification, trash rules, we have advertised on our gateway signage. In fact, Halifax helped to promote and pay for some of the landscaping, we even acknowledged them for their help. So, there is precedent for this.
All right. Is that it?
I have one more, but it's probably going to give you all shock in the head, so I don't know if it's, you're going to handle it tonight. We're, we're developing Howland, this is my concern. We're developing Howland to be downtown, that's the way I gather it. Our community center's on Howland Boulevard, and that's county utilities. All the houses back there are county utilities. We're going to be putting more economic development on Howland Boulevard, and who's getting the money? Who's getting all the utility money? The county is. And I, I was told that we looked into before of us purchasing that area, and I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't be looking at it now to say, look, if we're going to have a lot of businesses, and that's where the money is, is in those utilities, that's a lot of revenue that we're losing to the county that I think we should be looking at, okay, is it going to pay us back if we actually purchase that part of the county utilities? And I know it's a bad time to talk about money, but imagine that as downtown and all those businesses, are we going to kick ourselves in the bottom a few years from now when all those utility monies, they're going to the county?
Utilities are governed by zones, that's in the county zone for us to buy it, the figures, I, I wouldn't even throw a figure out because it would really spoil your day, but the amount of money they wanted for that never made sense. We've tried to work with them over the years, they've never, they've never offered to move forward with that. And the enterprise funds that's operated, you know, the utilities, the money we make goes back in the utility for the customers, and I understand what you're saying, it would help offset water fees with sewage somewhat, or sewage, sewage fees, but that's in the county system. I don't know that you could justify bonding based on the commissioners right now bonding forty, fifty, sixty million dollars to buy that north plant. It's something that we've always had out there, and we've talked to them about it, but it's, it's, it's a wish out there.
Yeah, and, and I get it's a wish, but we also have a whole new county commission up there.
Yep, and we talked about it.
And we haven't had a whole lot of money coming on that road, but now we're...
Yeah, we, we talked to them, I mean, I've talked to them and, and many times over the years, it's just they, they want a huge sum of money for it. And I look at the utility as being the residents' utility.
Oh, I'm sure, Steve, we're going to make huge...
I think the residents that are out there paid for it, they're paying for all the improvements, and if we accept the bonds that the county has on them and take it over, that's the only way it makes financial sense to me. Why should they get a premium of future sales and that? And that's how they figure, because I went through it when we bought Southern States, but that was from a private entity. County wants to do the same thing, so that's a debate for a later day, but I think...
And I get it, and I'm only thinking of it because we got the community center there, I have a car wash, huge water bill and sewer, I'm sure, and Honest One, and we got the movie theater, and we got all these other businesses, so...
It's a good point, but it's...
But I'm just, just thought, so that, that's all for now.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to echo what some of the other commissioners said, the, all the first responders, law enforcement, the folks at the hospitals, the dispatchers, for everything they did the other day with the Orange City Fire. And a special thank you to City of Daytona Beach and the City of New Smyrna Beach for sending crews both into our city to assist us and over, over to the fire to, to help relieve some of the crews that had worked several hours over there. State of the counties tomorrow, what time are we meeting up here?
We're leaving here at ten thirty.
Okay.
So be here at ten thirty.
And who's all going?
We ain't waiting on you. It's a secret.
Mitch, you're going?
Mitch, me, you...
Chris?
You're not making it.
Chris is going. So the four of us?
Four of us, and she's going, because she's driving from work.
Because you got to go to work. Okay, that's all I got.
That's all you want to know, okay. I have one thing. Commissioners, we, we, I don't want to let this go, but I think this needs to be turned over to staff, and we don't need to debate it. That family that was impacted by our decision tonight, you know, has that single home, can't do anything, they've been working with the developer and everything, the new attorney, they've got a system. But we need to instruct staff to administratively rezone those lots, both the homeowner and